At this time, we would like to do a pledge allegiance to the flag. I'd like to ask if you can please stand with us to recite the pledge. If you can, please stand.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in the visible liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. At this time, we have a special presentation. As you know, our city clerk, I'm sorry, thank you, our city treasurer, who has served, well, she served as clerk years and years before she became the treasurer, and she passed away, and so we want to do a special presentation tonight in honor of Debbie McAvain.
I will read a resolution honoring Deborah M. McAvain, treasurer, and after this, I would ask for a moment of silence. The City of Country Club Hills, Office of the Mayor, and the City Council, resolution of respect and loving memory honoring Deborah M. McAvain, treasurer. Whereas the Chicago Southland is composed of many things, including responders, communities, residents, schools, parks, businesses, civic organizations, and elected officials, and whereas each of these components are dependent upon the individuals within them in order to be successful, and whereas Deborah M. McAvain was a devoted and loving spouse to Jerry, an adoring mother of Beth and Kate, and admiring grandmother of Molly and Owen, and a doting aunt of Jack, a family member, friend, and colleague, and whereas Deborah M. McAvain was a longtime resident of the City of Country Club Hills for over thirty years, who shared her love of family and community, and whereas Deborah M. McAvain served the City of Country Club Hills as city treasurer and previously as city clerk, providing twenty-plus years of service to residents, she shared her gracious gift of intellectual knowledge, steady spirit, cheerful heart, and keeper of the stories in her exemplary life. Whereas Deborah M. McAvain was a proud graduate of Marion Catholic High School, where she was a proponent of the color guard program and the marching band program. Deborah was a good recipient, was a proud recipient of the Norman Bates Award for service and a studious attendee of the University of Michigan and Loyola University, Chicago. And whereas Deborah M. McAvain was a faithful member of St. Emrick Parish and Country Club Hills, where her faith was first and foremost. Whereas Deborah M. McAvain enjoyed her spare time reading, crocheting, baking those special Christmas cookies, along with spending time with the company of family, friends, and neighbors. Whereas Deborah M. McAvain was a caring, nurturing neighbor and active community member who enjoyed her spare time reading, I'm sorry. Whereas, family and friends are deeply saddened by Deborah's passing. We embrace her generous spirit and kindness, and whereas Deborah M. McAvain established a legacy of family, faith, and service, and this legacy will inspire us for a lifetime. Whereas the City of Country Club Hills appreciates and respects Deborah M. McAvain for her commitment and contributions made to the City of Country Club Hills. Now therefore, I, Mayor James W. Ford, and the City Council of City of Country Club Hills, offer this resolution in recognition, respect, and honor of the life and legacy of Deborah M. McAvain, a solicitous, extraordinary, and truly remarkable woman. This was presented to the family and witnessed thereof on the 29th day of November, 2022. May we please have a moment of silence? Thank you.
Thank you. Our hearts go out to the McAvain family, and at the end of the service, we will retire her name tag, her seat is next to Alderman of the First Ward, and we will retire her seat, her name tag after this meeting today. Next, we have on the agenda, roll call.
Certainly. The meeting started at 7:17. Alderman Lockett.
Present.
Alderman Davis.
Here.
Alderwoman Evans.
Here.
Alderman Spivey.
Here.
Alderman Edwards.
Here.
Mayor Ford.
Present. All right, pastor, leaders.
Good evening. Want to say we are still praying for the McAvain family. A reading from St. Luke, beginning at the second chapter, the tenth verse. "And the angel said unto them, Fear not; for, behold, I bring you good tidings of great joy, which shall be to all people; for unto you is born this day in the city of David a Savior." We come on tonight thanking you, Lord, for preserving us. Thank you, Lord, for saving us. Thank you for allowing us to be here at the regular city council meeting, the last one of this year. We come praying for our mayor, our council members, our fire and police department, all the fine men and women who serve this great city. May the Lord bless the residents of Country Club Hills. May the Lord bless our troops, and may God bless America. Amen.
Amen.
Amen. Thank you so much. Okay, at this time, we have a general proceedings.
Thank you, Mayor. General proceedings, approval of the regular city council meeting minutes 10:24, 2022. The administrative city council meeting is 11:07, 2022, and the regular city council meeting 11:14, 22, and also the administrative meetings minutes for 12:05, 2022.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Are there any corrections, questions? All right, here none. Roll call, please.
Certainly. Alderman Lockett.
Yes.
Alderman Davis.
Yes.
Alderwoman Evans.
Yes.
Alderman Spivey.
Yes.
All right, motion carries. At this time, we go to communications and reports by the mayor. Do we have a representative here from the WEI? Oh, come to the mic, please. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Brian Stanley. I'm the manager of the Workforce Equity Initiative Grant at Prairie State College. This is a, I've been to your meetings before, where I was representing the Opportunity Works Initiative at Prairie State College. The Workforce Equity Initiative Grant, many of you have the flyers for it. We're workforce development programs created by Legislative Black Caucus that allows for students to take on short-term certificate programs and also finish up degree programs at Prairie State College. Many of those programs lead to certificates in clinical medical assistance, some in hospital, some in, mostly in healthcare. We have many students who are taking classes and becoming firefighters and EMTs, and we have a graduation this coming Thursday, that we're always proud to be a part of. Look forward to any questions you may have. If there is some information on the flyer, and you could reach out to me anytime. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Mayor Ford, City Council, my name is Chad Vleester. I just want to take a minute to introduce myself. I am the Fire Science Coordinator at Prairie State College, and one of the programs that is a generous benefit of the WE is the firefighter EMT program. We've been able to, close to 200 students over the last two years have been able to pay for tuition and books through the WE grant. So that's the great thing that we have going on at the college. How does this affect Country Club Hills? Country Club Hills, from the beginning, with the leadership of Chief Hollinger and now Deputy Chiefs Taganga, who've been fantastic supporters of the program, have opened their doors not only to the training facility, but to the personnel as far as recruitment for that. So I'd just like to publicly thank them for their tireless efforts in making this program a success, and we look forward to a good partnership in the future.
Thank you. I think that's a great program. Prairie State College, your recruiting efforts have been great, and we appreciate our fire chief and deputy chief for getting involved in that program, because it's going to really benefit the city, well, not only the city, but the Southland as a whole. So we do appreciate that. Thank you so much for coming out tonight. Next, we have on our agenda, we would like to introduce our fire and police commissioners, if they could come forward.
Good evening. My name is Michael Holmes, currently serving as Chair of the Country Club Hills Police and Fire Commission. I'm gonna let the other firefighter, fire commissioners introduce themselves.
Good evening, Michael Perry, Fire and Police Commissioner.
Robert Beatty, Police and Fire Commissioner.
Sorry about that. You guys did the introductions. We have the certificates. Yep.
Okay, so we're gonna have a swearing-in this evening. One of the things I want to say, I appreciate the mayor and the city council for opening up these swearing-ins to the entire city. We think it's in your all's best interest to see who's coming to serve you as first protectors for the city. So I'm, I don't know if, Deputy Chief, you want to say something before we bring the firefighters up? Deputy Chief Scott?
I'll say a little something after, after we're done, but I just want to thank the city commissioners for the hard work. It's tough getting firefighters now. It's tough getting good firefighters. With the initiative working through Prairie State, with the EMT program and the firefighter program, we're producing good candidates. You've got some of the best candidates that are produced in the South suburbs right now, and they're working for you. So with that, we can bring up the three candidates, DeJuan, Angelo, and Justin. Chief Hollinger has granted me the opportunity to serve, serve the city, serve the fire department by kind of running with the testing process. It's a good testing process. Again, we created a good group of guys here to do the work. And then I'll turn it over to the commissioner here, and I think we're starting with Angelo, right?
Okay. Okay, Angelo, if you can stand, raise your right hand. Repeat after me. I solemnly swear.
Solemnly swear.
I will uphold.
I will uphold.
Protect and defend.
Protect and defend.
Constitution of the states.
Constitution of the United States.
Constitution of the state law.
Constitution of the state law.
I will at all times.
Will at all times.
Maintain and conduct myself.
Maintain and conduct myself.
In a manner befitting an employee.
In a manner befitting an employee.
Of the City of Country Club Hills.
City of Country Club Hills.
I further agree.
Further agree.
Provide by all the rules.
Provided by all the rules.
Regulations and ordinances.
Regulations and ordinance.
Of the City of Country Club Hills.
City of Country Club Hills.
I will faithfully discharge my duties.
Discharge my duties.
As firefighter.
As firefighter.
Paramedic.
Paramedic.
Best of my ability.
Best of my ability.
So help me God. So help me God. Congratulations.
Well, Angelo, would you like to introduce the camera?
Oh. With me today, I have my mom, or my dad and my mom, my grandparents. I've kind of guided me through my childhood, sat me on the cap, and my lovely girlfriend, career, who was taken on the arduous task of dating a firefighter first time. So I can't even get enough, but it's sent through the trials and tribulations of this whole process. Yeah, my father's a retired firefighter, so the second generation, all of his stuff.
So we're gonna give pen to, he's presenting. They had, and then wanted to take a picture of his graduation. They were in their class days, and then said, man, you're a lieutenant, so, yep.
Hey, Chief, can you have them two take a picture, please?
Yeah.
Congratulations, good job.
I.
I. Justin Copping.
Solemnly swear.
Solemnly swear.
I will uphold.
I will uphold.
Protect and defend.
Protect and defend.
Constitution of the United States.
Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State.
I will at all times.
I will at all times.
Maintain and conduct.
Maintain and conduct.
Myself in a manner.
Myself in a manner.
Befitting an employee.
Befitting an employee.
City of.
City of Country Club Hills.
I further agree.
Further agree.
Provide by all of the rules.
Provided by all of the rules.
Regulations and ordinances.
Regulations and ordinances.
City of.
City of Country Club Hills.
I will faithfully discharge.
I will faithfully discharge.
My duties.
My duties.
As firefighter.
As firefighter EMT.
Best of my ability.
Best of my ability.
So help me God.
Yeah.
This is my twin brother, Jerry Copping, and my parents, Linda and Jerry Copping. Dave made me the man I am today, and I still have, have witnessed me start my career as a firefighter. I'm honored to serve the town of Country Club Hills, and I look forward to many years of great service.
Congratulations.
I solemnly swear that I will uphold, protect, and defend the Constitution of the United States. I will at all times maintain and conduct myself in a manner befitting an employee of the City of Country Club Hills. I further agree, provide by all of the rules, regulations, and ordinances of the City of Country Club Hills. I will faithfully discharge my duties as firefighter EMT, best of my ability.
Seems like half the room might come up, but.
Along with everyone else back there, it's helped me get to this point. Chief Yachter, starting on Twitter is old. Everyone who taught at Academy and everyone else who's been there since I studied. Maggie Washington, what was it, Academy Wood? Thanks, everybody. All the guys who put a good time these last two weeks, Martino being there every day with us. I appreciate all the help there.
All right, so who are you thanking?
Uh, my mom.
Excellent choice. Go ahead. Let's hope we don't have another, right?
Fellas, family, fire department's steeped in tradition, 200 years old, even longer. As you can see with all the family members that are here supporting these candidates, it's impressive. They've now joined a new family, and if you look at the back, you can see what this means to the fire department family. They're supportive. Every one of these candidates in their interviews, in their process, has expressed the part of being part of a family. Welcome to the Country Club Hills Fire Department family.
All right, congratulations again, gentlemen. All right, we're gonna move on. Next on our agenda for the night, we have the city clerks' report.
Thank you, Mayor. First, I would like to say my apologies to Alderman Edwards, if I miss calling your name. I do have you as present, though. So let the record show that he is present tonight. Also want to just share that we have our 2020 meeting schedule on the side table here, informational table, as well as our summer meeting schedule for 2023. We will have that uploaded to the website within the next week. Very briefly, I just want to share a quick story. So I went to the DMV, spent about three hours at the DMV to try and get my, what is that, the?
Smart thing.
Yeah, the newer licensing. And so if you are a, if you're married, if your name has changed at all since birth, your real, my real ID, if your name has changed since birth, you have to have your marriage certificate, not the cute little one that they give you when you get married, but the one actually from the courthouse. So I had to leave and go to Markham Courthouse, come back the next day. So I spent a total of about six hours, and then they changed the date for May of 2025. So just a reminder, if you're going, take everything that you think you may need so that you don't have to go back another day. Also, I just want to share the Winter Wonderland was a great success. Had a great time at that event, and also the senior luncheon last Thursday. It was great to see all of our seniors. And I just want to wish everyone a very Merry Christmas and happy and safe New Year in the report.
Thank you. Next, we have the committee reports, and we wanted to, I just want to thank Alderman for his donation to the seniors, the gift cards and everything that you presented. So thank you so much. They enjoyed that as giveaways. Next report we have will be the committee reports, and the finance committee, risk management chair, Alderman Lockett.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to seek council's approval on the vouchers for $1,634,850.30.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any questions?
Question. Was something pulled out?
Yes. Just one for the attorney, I think it was $2,900.
That was it?
Yes.
Okay, any other questions? If not, here are no other questions. Roll call, please.
Alderman Lockett.
Yes.
Alderman Davis.
Yes.
Alderwoman Evans.
Yes.
Alderman Spivey. Alderman Edwards.
Yes.
Motion passes. Next is our insurance renewal for 2022.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Are there any questions?
Question.
Go right ahead.
Was there any major changes in the insurance, up or down?
I'll let the Owens group speak to that. It's kind of a two scenario.
Yes, sir, Alderman. Good evening, everyone. My name is Bill Owens with the Owens Group. I'm here with David McNan, also with our organization. I'm the. I'm the CEO of the Owens Group. David is our president. We market at your program heavily, as we do every year. We go to all the insurance companies. And the, we're in a hard market right now, which means soft market prices are going down, hard market prices are going up. For the past four quarters of this year, prices have been going up each quarter, similar to last year. And we explained last year why, in the year before, why the pricing, and we're in a hard market right now, it's all because of all of the things you're hearing all around the country with the large settlements. So, we have a policy, when we get a no from an underwriter, we don't, we don't say decline and put away the file. We go back to that underwriter again and again and again and again, different kinds of information, looking at it at a different way, and we continue that process. This year, we have, your current program is led on a, from a liability standpoint, because that's the bulk of all of your premium, with Safety National Casualty Corporation. And that program costs a total of... Your current program is expiring with $20 million in limits for liability. You have property coverage and all kinds of other coverages, but the bulk of your pricing, again, is locked in the area of, for your liability coverages. The, that program costs now $1,659,228. The renewal for the same program, again, led by Safety National Corporation, different carriers above Safety National, they do $5 million, and then, and then we layer it up, going to $20 million. Various carriers, carriers have pulled out, the less carriers, higher pricing. The total is $1,779,670. We are asking for the approval of this program. The, you talk about a change in this program currently, for the first... You pay the first, for your general liability, auto, everything but your law enforcement, excluding workers' compensation, you pay the first $100,000. And past several years, you pay the first $500,000 in law enforcement liability. That's the big, with all, a lot of the premium law enforcement liability. And so we did recommend going from $100,000 to $500,000 across the board, because when you look at your claims, they're coming in around 100, a little bit up above 100. The premium savings was $90,000 to go, to increase your retention. So again, we're recommending the $1,779,670. There is a opportunity with, to replace Safety National. Many, various municipalities, Safety National is a carrier, because that, in Cook County, because that's the only carrier left. But we did get an indication from Chubb Insurance, their huge operation. And the total pricing, if their home office approves that in the next couple of days, would be $1,626,538, which would be a reduction in price over your current program, and that's unheard of in the current marketplace. So we are asking for the approval of the $1.779,670. As long as we can get approval in the next couple of days, we'll switch out the program, and, and then with that one carrier, and automatically you would say, you approve the higher price, but we would, you would be the beneficiary, we would bill you only for the lower price.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
And if I can just mention, Mr. Owens, or if you'll mention, another thing that's kind of driven this a little bit is, in the past, the carriers used to go back two years of your insurance coverage, and then from two to three to five to...
Yes, sir. The, the, it used to be five years, then seven years. Now, they don't even look at you unless you have 10 years of loss information from your, from your third-party claims administrator. Chubb went a step further. They wanted to see those loss runs, plus they wanted to see all of your carrier loss runs. They wanted to compare the two to make sure they matched up. So the underwriting is, is intense. The reason Chubb isn't responding is because, just like everyone else, they're, the insurance companies are suffering from talented pools of candidates. They're, they're poaching each other's underwriters. The underwriter that was supposed to be on this Chubb program, she got hired away by someone else, which left it an avoid, but she blessed it before she left. And, and so hopefully, prayerfully, in two days, we will have that approval, and you'll have a lower pricing than your current program.
Alright, thank you so much, sir.
Thank you.
Motion for 2022 insurance renewal?
Second.
It's been probably a motion, second. Are there any additional questions? If not, here are none, roll call, please.
Certainly. Alderman Lockett?
Yes.
Alderman Davis?
Yes.
Alderwoman Evans?
Yes.
Alderman Spivey?
Yes.
Alderman Edwards?
Yes.
Thank you. Next is housekeeping items, this approval of the 2022 tax levy ordinance?
Second.
Okay, we're probably motion and second. Any questions on the ordinance?
Question.
Go right ahead.
This is not a tax increase, it's a tax decrease. Explain it.
So, if I can answer, no, it's not an increase, it's just that with the city, we can go up to anything over a 5% that the city has to have a public hearing for. So we actually, if asking for less, so we're asking for the county clerk's office to hereby authorize, direct it to reduce the loss amount added to the city's aggravated tax levy from 3% amount to 2%. And then, on the other side, instead of, let's go from a 5%, we're only asking for 3% to finance our bonds and, our bonds and the interest for the 2020 tax year.
So you're asking the part two, you're asking for 5% or 3% for, oh, the taxpayers?
No, no. We're, we're actually asking to them to reduce it by 2%, I mean by 1%. And we can tax anything over a 5%, we have to go to a public hearing. So the difference is a 3% that we're asking for on our tax levy.
Actually, can I be recognized? Yeah, actually, that's the loss and cost resolution, in the event that the tax money doesn't come in, Alderman. But the exact amount, our 2022, the amount we levy was $18,425,304. Now we're levying $18,402.058. So it's actually, the total levy to the city is actually less. And the way they came up with that is the corporate was actually lowered, and we increased the levy that were given to the fire and police pension, only because that's recommended, because we, you have to fund it by a certain amount, and we weren't there, so. But the net effect to the city is actually, looks like .13 less, so it is absolutely not a tax increase. But the, the, and even the, what Alderman Lockett was speaking of, that recommendation is less, that's something you gotta do anyway. And in case the money doesn't come in, that percentage is gonna be less, he's recommending, board's recommending less than it would have been based on what projected amount was.
Alright, any other questions?
And just to mention also, with us funding the police and fire, it gives us a better bond rating if we go out to do refinancing.
Alright. Okay, roll call, please.
Certainly. Alderman Lockett?
Yes.
Alderman Davis?
Yes.
Alderwoman Evans?
Yes.
Alderman Spivey?
Yes.
Alderman Edwards?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries.
Okay, approval of the 2022 truth in taxation, and that's what was just explained.
Right.
Second.
Alright, motion and a second. Any questions? We just talked about that. Roll call, please.
Certainly. Alderman Lockett?
Yes.
Alderman Davis?
Yes.
Alderwoman Evans?
Yes.
Alderman Spivey?
Yes.
Alderman Edwards?
Yes.
Okay, and then approval of the 22 loss and cost resolution, it's already explained also.
Second.
Alright, it's probably motion and second, roll call, please.
Certainly. Alderman Lockett?
Yes.
Alderman Davis?
Yes.
Alderwoman Evans?
Yes.
Alderman Spivey?
Yes.
Alderman Edwards?
Yes.
Okay, next is, next is a motion to approve IRF coordinator, and it's been chosen for the HR Director, Nicole Cody. We're doing this because this was some of the responsibility that our former treasurer was her duty, so now we have to select someone else to fill that position.
Alright, I need a second?
Second.
Alright, it's probably motion and second. Any questions? Roll call, please.
Certainly. Alderman Lockett?
Yes.
Alderman Davis?
Yes.
Alderwoman Evans?
Yes.
Alderman Spivey?
Yes.
Alderman Edwards?
Yes.
Alright, thank you.
End of report.
Thank you. Law and Order's Government Operation, Alderwoman Evans?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. My next meeting will be Thursday, January 19th at 5:00 PM, and that is the end of my report.
Alright, thank you. Next, we have Public Works and Utilities, Alderman Davis, Chair.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. No report at this time.
Alright. Next, we have Economic Development Plan, and Alderman Spivey, Chair.
Yes. Thank you, Mayor. Seeking approval for a consultant for Dowco Corporation for the independent study for the TIF.
Second.
Alright, it's been probably motion and second. Any questions?
Yeah, Mayor, I just, a quick question now, because I guess there's three phases or something with that. Now, the cost, what is the cost of the city?
The cost is not...
Go ahead.
The cost is nothing to the city.
It said it was $10,000.
But the Dow Corporation is gonna pick up all the charges?
If, if the TIF goes forward, if not, still not...
No, we, we're required to hire the TIF consultant at their expense. So whatever expensive it is, that gentleman back there will pick it up.
Mr. Randy?
Alright, thanks.
Mr. Baslik, would you like to say a few words? You fine?
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Attorney?
If I could just briefly comment, Alderman's correct that the developer has agreed to pick up the costs. Costs during, it looks like, three different phases?
Yes.
I would suggest whoever's in charge of the, of the, sending the bills out, that we bill it in phases, so when we get billed for the first phase, we send it out and let the developer pay, et cetera, et cetera.
Correct.
So we stay right on top of it.
That will come out of finance.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, thank you. We have a motion, second, and questions? No other questions, roll call, please.
Certainly. Alderman Lockett?
Yes.
Alderman Davis?
Yes.
Alderwoman Evans?
Yes.
Alderman Spivey?
Yes.
Alderman Edwards?
Yes.
Alright, motion carries.
The Country Club Hills Theater concert tickets, and I'd like to do these two together, approval for, for the 2023 budget. I'd like to table those?
Second.
For further discussion, so we can have that dialogue with the finance department.
Okay.
Alderman Lockett, would you be okay with that? Okay, yeah, I know, I know she's saying that, I just wanted to let you know that that's what, why I'm taking that.
Alright.
Roll call.
Okay, roll call, on the table.
Certainly. Alderman Lockett? Alderman Davis?
Yes.
Alderwoman Evans?
Yes.
Alderman Spivey?
Yes.
Alderman Edwards?
Yes.
Alright. Motion carries. Okay, next, we have Pox and Rex.
Thank you, Mayor.
Edwards?
Thank you. My next meeting will be January 19th, 2023, at 5:30. I did have a meeting where I had District 227 send two principals, District 144 sent a principal representative for 228. I had three mentors there. The District 160 did not send anyone. I contacted the superintendent November 11th. He said he would get back to me, haven't heard from. The lady, her name is O-L-O-W-E, Mrs.?
Dr. Lowey.
Okay. She, I was asked, I asked her to send a letter here to thank the Fire Department for books and stuff we received, that was November 15. They haven't responded. I'm a little bit tired of trying to work with them, I might let the mayor work with them, because they don't respond. I did bring up the mayor's program when I had my meeting, they say they needed something in writing, and they needed the people that's gonna do the mentor program to come to the school, so, at that point. Then I found out from 227, they have young people who came from Venezuela and other countries, who they need clothes for, but they only want new clothes. So I'm working on that. I brought to the table jobs from the show, Foot Locker, Walmart, and docks, hoping that the high school students can get jobs. I'm out working now on the haircuts, manicures, and pedicure, and dresses for the eighth grade and the seniors, so they can have a nice graduation. The mayor mentioned the senior luncheon, I thought was excellent. When I say excellent, I did give about 11 different cards to them, Chick-fil-A, Panda Express, Buffalo Wall Ring, Buffalo Wild Rings, Subway, Starbucks, Walmart, Marcus Theater, and so on. I just donated to the Victory Center to give them a nice party. But I do have one problem. I got a list of the streets that were repaired, and I asked a few of my Ward 1 residents to come out. We had 61,000, now I think it's up to 80. Other wards, quarter of a million, and when we do our streets, they're supposed to bid at anything over 20,000. It's four different contracts done to a ward, and I'd like the city clerk, or the mayor, or the manager, to let me see what the bids were. Also felt like that our ward was disrepresented, because we are old ward, and we've been begging for streets repairs. I actually seen it in the minutes, but I passed on it on three minutes. I've asked each time to repair our streets, and look at this, quarter of a million spent on one ward, 61,000 spent on my ward. That's a disgrace.
Correction. Look at the budget that you just passed.
It said 80,000, it went up by 11,000.
Well, wait a minute, what about, that's just part of it, though. You had already spent 80,000.
I got it right here.
John, I understand what you got there, but your number's a little off, so let's have a sidebar?
Let's have, let's, let's look at 80,000 and 60,000, that's still 140. It's 250,000 spent on one ward, compared to 100 for this ward, 94. What is that? That's not fair. We pay taxes in Ward 1, we deserve better.
I think...
You have to wait tomorrow, I'm finishing my report, you can't just jump in.
I'm not jumping in.
There's Robin Rose's order to this.
I'm just trying to tell you that some of those are grant, grant roads that...
We're trying to help you, John.
Didn't come out the cities.
Let's get together, sit down, and I'll show you the difference.
That ain't even the money that Alderman Davis put in the program.
He only put in $150,000 for each ward.
Right. So 680 is 140, we still ain't reached anything.
Yes, you have, and I, I got those figures for you. If you just let me sit down with you, and let's, you know, let's cooperate and sit down, and we can talk about it, and I can show you what it is, because you don't have all the figures there.
I got what you gave me.
Well, you have to look at the budget tonight.
Okay.
And then we can add those up, and then you'll see that you are over, a little bit over 150,000 for the first ward. You only allocate 150,000 per ward.
That was through Mr. Davis. We still have money through different programs.
Yeah, but you know that Dako hasn't done anything yet, that list is still outstanding. You got streets on that list that will be done in the spring.
I got it in my bag, but still in all.
That, those are federal dollars, and we have to wait until the feds okay those dollars for us to administer that program. That program is about $745,000, that's what the, the amount of that program. That program covers quite a few streets in the first ward, just like it does all over the city, so let's have a sidebar.
End of my report.
Alright, thank you. Anything else?
No.
Alright, great, great. Lost track here. A motion to open the floor to the public?
Second.
It's been probably motion, second, public, if you'd like to address the council, please come to the mic. Limit your time to three minutes or less. If not, we'll close the floor.
Hello, everyone. Nancy Schweitzer.
Hello.
How are you? Nancy Schweitzer. Um, my first question is a question that I asked on the fourteenth of November, for which I do not recall getting an answer. And that was about the snowplow program for seniors? Because I asked if those individuals get notified that they've qualified or notified that their driveways will not be plowed, and I do not recall getting an answer. And I was assured that all my questions would be answered.
The answer is, if the number is five hundred-
Correct. I'm assuming that's a hundred per ward.
Uh, and we're at, uh, we're a little less than that now. In the, in the event that we get to five hundred, we would notify those people who come in after five hundred, let them know that they didn't make the number.
Okay.
But if you don't hear from us and you within that five hundred, and I think you are, then you're good. You're gold.
Okay, perfect. Um, next question is, um, is there an official webmaster?
Uh, yes, the IT Director is the person who looks over the, uh, website.
Well, he needs to get a little more on the ball because there's still information on the website about the branch pickup on October. There's still information about the gubernatorial election. There's still information about the comprehensive community survey. The first one, the second one.
There's one tomorrow. Is that the one that's on there?
I honestly don't know. I look, no, there was one that I, that I started to fill out. It was the second one that I started to fill out that was similar to the very first one.
They all the same. All three of them are the same. Once we send them out, it's the same document, asking for the same information.
Says, second, number two. So you're saying that the three ones that you, the three you send out are-
It might say number two, number three, but it's the same document requesting the same information. And it's tomorrow, by the way.
Community partnerships and stuff that, I mean, it's all occurred in September and they're still listening on the offer? Now, there were new, two new inputs, two new pieces of data today. One of them about the, um, bids being put out. And the other one, I don't recall. And there's no update on that, pretty much no updates on the Facebook page either. And because I was here on the fourteenth, I was aware of the food drive. That still hasn't shown up on the website, nor is it on the Facebook page. And I know you sent letters to the churches, but there's probably a certain percentage of the residents that don't go to church. So they wouldn't find out about it. And there's no guarantee that the residents who do go to church all necessarily go to churches here in this municipality. So, that's frustrating, the website is so out of date.
Thanks.
All right, we got it. Thank you. Next person, please.
Yes, my name is Albert Boyd. And we come here representing the Victory Center. Okay, we have had quite a few problems over there. We are, most of us drive over there. We in them. And, uh, we have a lot of complaints about the streets. We are at forty-one fifty-two West Gatlin Boulevard, okay? And Gatlin Boulevard is in bad shape. I don't think they patched that street up since this year at all, okay? And I don't know where the money alloc- allocated for that, but the street is in bad shape. I think I have talked to the mayor once about, uh, we need a way out of that center. Okay, I've been over for almost ten years, and I haven't seen it to change yet. Uh, I think I talked to the mayor about trying to find out, uh, who own that land over there. We had a little drive out of the, in front of the building, forty-one fifty-two West Gatlin, right behind Walmart. But they closed that street off, that little street off for some reason or another. We don't know why. Uh, but the, uh, storage area over there, I think they closed it off for some reason. But that's the only way we had to get out of there. And I, and I think it's not fair to us. Most of people drive over there.
Yes.
Most of the time, we are going left and still right, cause Walmart is over there. And when we go right, we had to go all the way across the bridge, turn around, come back, which don't make any sense to me.
Right.
Matter of fact, I didn't know that we couldn't make a left turn at first. I got a ticket, okay? So I had to find out what's going on. But we need a way out of there. Okay, uh, I think I had to understand that when they built that, uh, those new factories over there, I think the mayor know what I'm talking about. Uh, we thought we were gonna have a way out of there then. But when they built them factories, we, they got a road going through there, but we still had to go over into the mall to hit that highway, hit that all the drive. So we need some help. The, the, we're getting a lot of complaints in that building about why we don't have a way to get out, get out of that center. We need a way. We need some answers. We wanna know what kind of development they have for that area. Maybe later on, they can fix another way to get out there. But they got a lot of land over there. We need to know what they gonna do with it and what, what they gonna do for us. That's all we need to know.
And, thank you, and I have an answer for you. Uh, I have been pushing and making the developers aware, the fact that the road starts, uh, past the Victory Center. It passes, uh, the Pa- the Path Center, and it should be extended to Cicero. That is what you and I discussed before, having it to go out to Cicero, so that you could go out west instead of coming east back to Prowlaski. And so the developer who owns the land is very aware of that. And so there will not be any, um, development over there if that road is not completed. That's what the mayor is, is promising. Now, as far as Gatlin Boulevard, that's not owned by the city. That's owned by Mr. Gatlin, uh, Gatlin Corp. Uh, I am meeting with them this week. Uh, I called them because I was over there on Wednesday. There's potholes from Prowlaski all the way back. And so that's unacceptable. Now, in the past, the city has been, have been patching the potholes, but that's really the Gatlin's responsibility, so we're gonna talk to them about that. When they bring that up to code, then it will be turned over to the city, but at this point in time, they still own it because they have to bring it up to the code before we can accept it. Yes, ma'am?
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
My name is Melva Smith. Can you hear me? My name is Melva Smith Weaver, and I'm from the first ward. I've lived there since nineteen eighty-five. Since I've lived there, I've never had a problem with getting streetlights fixed. There's a streetlight on my street that's been out since before April this year. It is still out. It is unsafe. I have called several times, not just me, my neighbors as well, with no response. The last time my husband and I called, we decided to call Commonwealth Edison, and they said that the light wasn't even documented. What does that mean? What does that mean? People that live on my street and across the street, safety is at risk every night that we live there because cars speed through from there by the hospital with no streetlights. So what's gonna happen? I hope it's not bad. Cause I'm here to say, it needs fixing. It's not the only one, but that's the one that affects me the most.
Understood. Uh, what, can you give us, uh, give the council the address, so we'll know what the-
The address where the streetlight is?
Yes, ma'am.
One seventy-seven forty-one Yale Lane.
One seventy-seven forty-one Yale.
It's right in front of that house.
Okay. I will have someone to check it out tomorrow.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Uh, you shouldn't have to have an issue with that. We should be able to take care of that for you. One seventy-seven forty-one Yale.
Uh, hello.
Hello, how you doing?
Pretty good.
Okay.
Uh, well, I'm, I'mma, I'mma start off with, uh, since my street got fixed, mayor told me to come in and make sure I let everybody know.
Clerk needs your name for the record.
My name Rudy Little. All right, uh, yeah, we're gonna start off with, um, I got my street fixed, so. Uh, I'm pretty much satisfied with that, but, uh, that's a whole nother story. First, I wanna start off, uh, I, I need to get a, a map of Country Club Hill, the wards. Back in the day, you could go to the police station, they would give you, uh, a map of Country Club Hills, let you know all the wards and stuff like that. And, um, second thing I would like to know is, uh, I would like to know the job descriptions of the employees. You know, what, what do they do? I, I mean, so I know, cause, you know, you see branches out in the street and stuff like that. I wonder, do they come pick that up? Cause I usually go and pick it up, stuff like that, but if you got a big giant branch in the street, who comes to get that? I never seen anybody else come pick that up. And, uh-
You asking for Public Works job description, right? Public Works.
Yeah, I guess that'd be it, cause that's, that's, who, who, who else works with us?
Yeah, that's right, okay.
Um, third, uh, you know, and Ward one, we got some, uh, hardworking people but, over there. Uh, some of those, uh, people have been living over there over thirty years. You know, they retired, you know, they got their little pensions, little social security, whatever. Um, uh, house most likely paid for, but you know, they can't just up, get up and move, uh, anything like that. You know, they maintaining, they maintain a good house. Um, those people deserve to be looked after. So, you know, I live-
What are you suggesting, uh?
Well, I'm just saying, um, I, I really don't know, cause like you said, you and John gonna have to talk about that on how the money is being dispersed between the wards.
Okay.
Because, um, uh, whoever got more money, and now I ain't gonna say nothing bad about nobody. If I, if you slick enough to talk, get more money for your ward, then hey, I congratulate you. But I wanted some money in my ward too.
Okay.
And, um, you know, the Country Club Hill is just one big community. When I looked at the list of where the money was allocated, I was looking at it like, well, you know, the most money went to Orland, uh, next Pitley Park, next Oak Forest. But no, this was all in Country Club Hill. So that money should have been spreaded out more in the community. It is not like it was going to different communities. Uh, and that's about it. Uh, I'm trying to come, you know, like I help the people and find out what's going on. I wanna know what's going on in my community. I seen somebody post something on Facebook the other day. I had to sit there and watch it because that's my community. What you, you know, what you talking? Somebody talking about they running for mayor, but that's another story.
All right, we'll get you, uh, we'll get you, uh, some answers. Okay, um, close the floor to the public?
Floor to the public, second.
All right, so we're probably motion, second, uh, roll call please.
Certainly. Alderman Lockett?
Yes.
Alderman Davis?
Yes.
Alderwoman Evans?
Yes.
Alderman Spivey?
Yes.
Alderman Edwards?
All right, motion carries. Uh, next we have the automatic reports, starting with Alderman Davis tonight.
Thank you Mayor. Mayor, if I can, I wanna yield to Pastor and let him explain the food drive.
Okay.
Thank you, Alderman. Jeremiah Temple Church International, we will be holding a, uh, food drive through, and that will take place on Wednesday, December twenty-first, uh, from one PM to three thirty PM. Uh, you can receive a bag of goods until we run out. Uh, we place them in the trunk of your car. Uh, there'll be such items as vegetables canned and dry goods, meats, fruits, uh, milk, other dairy products, and more, uh, items may vary. We are known as the little church with the big heart, and we want to be a blessing to you and your families during this Christmas season. Uh, we're located at forty-three fifty West one hundred and eightieth Street. And again, this will be Wednesday, December twenty-first. Uh, come and receive, uh, these items, as we would like to be a blessing to you and your families during the Christmas season. Thank you.
All right, thanks Pastor. Um, Mayor, I'd just like to, again, uh, congratulate the firefighters, and it sure looks like they putting together a basketball team. Tall and nice handsome young men. That's beautiful. And I just wanna wish the, um, also Alderman Lockett, share with me that Rose Chavez, uh, passed away today. Long-term resident of the, um, fifth ward. Really a pillar in our community. That's, uh, Rose, she lives on, on the corner, her husband was Sam. They used to have a dog and-
Oh, yeah, the White House.
And around, I mean, she had to be-
Oh, wow.
Actually, I saw the, uh, try, I didn't know what happened today, but, um, just, and we also lost, um, Wanda and TC's sister, Frida White, passed this week as well, so, uh, just for people to know those families, just to show comfort to them during this holiday season. And I just wanna wish everybody happy holidays, happy and safe holidays, uh, and that is it. End of my report.
All right, thank you. Alderman Lockett?
Hey, thank you Mayor. Um, I want to, I guess I'll start off with this first. Um, wanna, um, take a moment of silence and condolence for one of our former staff members of the Parks and, uh, Recs Department. Um, Michelle Tasker Brown, um, just recently passed away. And, um, also for our, uh, Director of, um, Building and Housing, um, Aaron Jones, his mom, um, passed away, disheartened. So like, just take a moment of silence and keep them in our prayers, their families. Most of us around here know him as AJ, so, AJ's mom. Um, I'd like to, um, congratulate and, and send out a shout again to the Junior Hawks. Um, it's a new cheerleading organization here, just formed two years ago here in Country Club Hills, and already there at the Nationals, and, um, I just kept my fingers crossed for them while I was there at the competition because, uh, it's, it's a lot dealing with sixty kids on an airplane, through the airport, at the hotel, getting them to the competition, getting them in line to do what they need to do, but they brought it back home for us, so I'm very proud of them. Um, the other thing is, I want to thank everyone that had an opportunity to come out for the, uh, turkey drive I had, um, right before Thanksgiving, um, at the church. Some two hundred and fifty families was blessed, and that makes me happy. Um, the other thing is, is I wanna wish everybody, uh, Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year, and stay safe. Thank you. End of my report.
Thank you. Alderwoman?
Yes, thank you Mayor. I just wanna also say happy holidays to everyone. I believe this is the last meeting of the year. So we will be going into the new year, as the clerk mentioned, uh, the new schedule is on the table there. So there's lots of meetings lined up for next year, but I do wish everyone a safe and happy holidays, happy Hanukkah, happy Kwanzaa, Merry Christmas, all of those things, so enjoy, have a safe holiday.
All right, thank you. Alderman Spivey?
Thank you Mayor. Just wanna say, uh, thank you to, uh, everyone for coming out tonight. Also, uh, Merry Christmas to everyone. Thank you to the Fire Department, the gentleman who, all the, all three of the gentlemen that got sworn in tonight. Thank you to the Fire and Police Board that does an excellent job. Also, I wanna thank, uh, just ask everybody to, uh, look out for each other, you know, check on your neighbors, uh, keep yourselves healthy and safe. Wear your mask, and also, uh, thank everyone for coming out to the, uh, um, Seventh Annual Turkey Drive from Country Club Hills for a Ford, Alderman. Thank you very much, and Merry Christmas to all my colleagues as well. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Alderman Edwards?
Uh, just Miss Weaver, you did mention it to me, but I never got a text for the address for the light. You did talk about it a month or two ago? Yeah, when I, when I get the text, I forward it to Public Works, then I get on it. One in front of, uh, Cornell, the Crawford's house, took about three and a half months, and I went out there and talked to the man every day, and he was like, this stuff need to be redone. It's old, it's not working right, period. Also, to the gentleman who left out from the, uh, Victory Center, uh, Mayor, I tried to go over there and get that, the streets fixed, and the lady who run it told me, no, this is not y'all property, so we cannot let y'all come in here and fix it.
That's true.
I tried. Uh, I wanna- I wanna wish happy holidays, especially hap- happy Kwanzaa, which I do at Chicago State, Malcolm X, and a few other places. I want the people to realize the power's in your hand, period. You have the power to change this community, and I want you to know that I'm trying to help the schools to the best of my ability. 160 doesn't participate, I'm gonna get clothes, I'm gonna get shoes, I'm gonna get gift cards. I'm gonna make sure that the eighth graders from Prairie Hill and the, uh, school 227 and 228 have a nice graduation, because I'm out there walking every day asking for funds to make sure that our kids enjoy themselves. End of my report.
Thank you. All right, uh, at this time, um, oh, yeah, one last thing, um, just wanna let you know that Kevin Casey, Mayor Casey, uh, he was the mayor of Hometown, he passed away, so I just wanna let you guys know on December 9th, I wanna let you know that, um, he's a long-time, um, mayor of, uh, Hometown, Illinois. I guess he was elected mayor in 2009, so we just wanna keep that family in, uh, in our prayers as well. So we having a lot of, uh, people to leave us here, so we have to really be careful and safe, and, um, appreciate everybody that's on the council tonight, and Merry Christmas and Happy New Year, and, and wished everybody to be safe. So with that, I'm asking for a motion to close.
Motion for a German?
Second.
It's been probably motion and second, uh, roll call please.
Certainly. Alderman Lockett?
Yes.
Alderman Davis?
Yes.
Alderwoman Evans?
Yes.
Alderman Spivey?
Yes.
Alderman Edwards?
Yes.
8:29 PM.
If you would like to speak to the mayor or council, please come forward.